Do we have the Zoom guys?
Yes, we do.
Okay. We have four commissioners who are present and we have two commissioners who are on Zoom. So we do have a quorum. I would like to make one addition to the agenda, and that is to add a section, a selection for a Planning Commission Vice Chair under open discussion at the end, if we have time. Announcements? Brandon, you want to give us some?
Yeah, so I'd like to inform the Commission and the community that the city's town hall, annual town hall, is scheduled for January 22nd from 5:30 to 7 o'clock at the Rogue River Room at SOU, and everyone's invited to attend. Also wanted to note for the Commission that the Jackson County Planning Commission will be hearing a, the request for the UGB modification of the UGB City Limits Line related to Nevada Street, an item that came before this Commission previously. That will be going to them tomorrow at 1:30. I also wanted to note that at your next study session on January 28th, Sabrina Cotta, City Manager, will be attending to present the information on the Committee Commission Ordinance that is before City Council at this time and a guide for committee and commission operations. And lastly, I wanted to note that the council liaison appointments, we lost our longstanding councillor Hyatt as she left the City Council. Appointments by the mayor are scheduled for January 21st, and so thereafter, we'll have a new councillor appointed as a liaison to this committee. And in terms of planning actions for your regular meeting in February, we are looking at a annexation application on 300 Clay Street. Will be coming before the committee or Commission on that day, so.
We've got an agenda ahead of us. The consent agenda. Commissioner Phillips made corrections to the December 10th minutes, which have been incorporated. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay. Moved and seconded. Do you have another correction?
Sorry, was this just the first minutes or both minutes?
First minutes, the December 10th minutes.
Okay.
We're approving both of them, though, in this motion.
Okay. So I have a comment on the, a request for clarification on the minutes for December 10th. The questions of staff section. To me, that doesn't really capture the, my question was about the density requirements of Area 7 and whether it, and so it was limited, it was to that, not the entire project, I guess. So I mean, to me, the description here is a little bit different than the actual discussion. Great.
Okay. So I'm assuming that the mover and second would agree to the motion being amended to include Commissioner McCracken Jen's comments?
Sure, that sounds fine.
And the second?
I agree.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, hearing none. We have approved the minutes for November 12th and December 10th. And now we're on to public forum. If you wish to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, please fill out one of the pink speaker request forms and hand it in to Michael, and you will be recognized. Okay, it looks like everybody's here for agenda items. Unfinished business. We have approval of findings for PA-T2-2024-00054, which is the request for an outline plan approval for a PSO subdivision residential site design review approval, a variance for driveway width, and a tree removal permit. Again, Commissioner Phillips made a correction to the document before us, and the correction has been made. Does any commissioner have any questions about the document? Or the approval, the recommendations? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the findings for the PSO subdivision residential site design review approval variance and tree removal permit for PA-T2-2024-00054, otherwise known as Kestrel Park Phase III.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't vote on that.
Okay. Then the motion's withdrawn. Is there somebody else who would like to make a motion to approve the findings?
I move to approve.
Thank you very much. Is the second, is there a second?
Okay, Russell's got it.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. And, Michael, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Parkinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Heron?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Pardon me. Commissioner McCracken Jen?
Aye.
Chair Werner?
Aye.
Okay, it passed. Thank you very much. We're on to type 2 public hearings. This is a type 2 public hearing. The public hearing, a type 2 public hearing is held before the Planning Commission with the Planning Commission decision being appealable to the City Council. This hearing is on PA-T1-2024-00255. The issue is, the staff is referring to the Planning Commission is a request for a formal interpretation of the Ashland Land Use Ordinance as it applies to how a peer respite home, as defined by ORS 430.626, is regulated. The applicant proposes peer respite homes be classified as a similar use to types of group living, which is defined in the Ashland Land Use Ordinance and is allowed in all residential zones. The applicant has also requested a reasonable accommodation consistent with the Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act. The site is 110 Terrance Street, Terrace Street. The applicant is Rogue Planning and Development and Tomasi Braga Dubai, representing Stabin Wagon. Property owner is Shirley D. Patton Trust. Comp plan designation is single family. Zoning is RR-0.5. The map is 39-1E-09-BC, and the tax lot is 8,000. Before we begin the public hearing, I will ask commissioners if they have had any ex parte contact or done any site visits. Commissioner Heron?
No ex parte, I did a site visit.
Commissioner Kincairn?
Site visit, no ex parte.
Commissioner McCracken Jen?
Site visit, ex parte contact via an unsolicited email, a unsolicited discussion at a public meeting, and an unsolicited discussion at the Elks Club, none of which got into content, only the fact that this was scheduled.
Okay, I think that's okay. Commissioner Parkinson?
No ex parte, no site visit.
Commissioner Phillips?
No ex parte, no site visit.
And I did have, I did a site visit, and I did have some ex parte contact between people who were letting me know that this was on the agenda, and that's as far as it went. So I'm not aware of any challenges for bias, prejudgment, or personal interest. I will now open the public hearing. I will acknowledge the correspondence that we've received on this proposal. We've received letters from Jay Mailey Odo, from Morgan Salmons and Danilo DeChenna, pardon me for screwing up your names, from Dr. Justin and Ratkell Spalding, from Ellie Minor and Tim Stephenson, from John Tribers, from J. Atch, from Carolyn Alman, from Jamaira Bermudas Otero and Christopher W. Cooper Bermudas, Diana Fairweather, Karen Grove, Elizabeth and Tim Lane, Solan Webb and Phyllis DeVries, David Alman, Jim Hatfield, Amanda Eels, Mike and Mary Vdiner, Jason Hasick, Octavia Quinn, Nancy Bardos, Bailey Rideout, Ron Rusnak and Lisa Zingarelli, Thomas Stenson with Disability Rights Oregon, Vic Welli, Claire Katsonson, a petition with 54 signatures submitted by Rob Patridge, and a public request response submitted by Rob Patridge, David and Caroline Alman, represented by Sydney Dryer of O'Connor West LLC, Katie Buttermove Buttermore, and Carmen Profit. So all those, I want to acknowledge that we received letters from all those folks, and thank you very much for participating in this public hearing. Brandon, will you make the staff presentation?
Thank you, Chair Werner. So the applicant is here and will be able to give you more detailed assessment of what their, the operations of the proposed use are. I'll outline what the general proposal is, as well as the process that is before you, as it's somewhat unique. The applicant has proposed using the existing residence at 110 Terrace Street as a peer respite center. And peer respite centers are defined under ORS Oregon Revised Statutes 430-275-1A as voluntary nonclinical short-term residential peer support provided in a home-like setting to individuals with mental illness or trauma response symptoms who are experiencing acute distress, anxiety, or emotional pain. The proposal from the applicant seeks to provide temporary housing for up to 14 days to individuals in mental health crisis, emphasizing recovery, support, and a peer-led environment. The application is before you because the proposed use is of a peer respite center is not explicitly identified within Ashland's municipal code. But Ashland's municipal code, Chapter 18.1.5.02, does provide a process for interpretation. And I'll read the section of code directly. Where proposed use is not specifically identified by this ordinance or the ordinance is unclear as to whether the use is allowed in a particular zone, the staff advisor, which is the Community Development Director in this case, may find the use to be, is similar to another use that is permitted, allowing conditionally or prohibited in this subject zone, and apply the ordinance accordingly. So the Planning Commission has been asked by the applicant to review the staff advisor's interpretation and provide a determination which may be appealed to the City Council as it is now processed as a type 2 planning action. So this is a quasi-judicial action, as referenced under our land use code. The authority of the Planning Commission under Chapter 18.5.20 does state that the Commission can review and clarify land use interpretations by the staff advisor. And this whole process ensures that it's a transparent review process that engages, allows for public involvement. The Planning Commission's decisions, I should note, are not final decisions as they may be appealed to the City Council under AMC 18.5.1.060, where it states that specifically they can be applied by any party with standing. I will note that "party with standing" is somebody that has participated in this public hearing process. And I, given the stack in front of you and the emails received, that's a number of individuals that do have standing. Criteria for an interpretation are that, one, it's, the applicable policies in the comprehensive plan are addressed to ensure the interpretation aligns with Ashland's land use policies and neighborhood character preservation, in this case. The purpose and intent of the ordinance provisions is another criteria, which allows the council to interpret that the land uses within the context of the zoning districts and their established purposes. And it also requests an opinion from legal counsel or the city attorney's office. And to my left is Carmel Zarhan, who is the Assistant City Attorney and has provided a letter in your memo relating to the staff advisor's recommendation. And to ensure that this has supported the interpretations and supported with the legal guidance with consistency with laws and regulations. So really, the focus of the interpretation from the staff perspective came down to a determination of whether the proposed use as a peer respite center is a group living situation, a traveler's accommodation, or a traveler's accommodation. And by definition, in the land use ordinance, group living was the category that the applicant had put forth as for consideration by the Planning Commission. And the definition in our code is that a group living is characterized by the long-term residential occupancy of a structure by a group of people. The size of the group is typically larger than the average size of a household. Group living structures do not include self-contained units, but rather have common facilities for residents, including those for dining, social, and recreational and laundry. And examples in our ordinance include residential care homes, residential care facilities, which are larger, and room and board facilities. The traveler's accommodation definition states that transient lodging in a residential zone having a room, rooms, or dwellings rented or kept for rent to travelers or transients for a charge or fee paid to be paid for rental use or for such facilities on one or more occasions for a period of less than 30 consecutive days. And the last definition that I wanted to provide to you is that in our code for residential or residential use. It states that residential use is long-term occupancy of a dwelling unit, which may be owner-occupied or rented. Occupancy of a dwelling unit for shorter periods, i.e. less than 30 days of time, is considered an overnight accommodation for transient individuals. See also definitions of accessory traveler's accommodation, hotel motel, and traveler's accommodation. So the key distinctions here is that the applicant contends that a peer respite center aligns most closely with group living due to the shared facilities and services, and I'm sure they'll speak to that. However, staff interprets the use as not meeting the definition of residential use as such as most similar to the traveler's accommodation based on the transient nature of the occupant's stays being a 14-day maximum per the definition of respite center under state law. So the implications in terms of this application of that definitional change in categorizing what use is most appropriate is that in an RR-0.5 zone, which is the zone that 110 Terrace Street is located, it is a rural residential single-family zone, and that emphasizes low-density residential use. And per our permitted and prohibited use table in Chapter 18.2.2030, the RR-0.5 zone permits group living uses, like residential care homes, but specifically prohibits transient lodging uses, like traveler's accommodations. The impact of this interpretation is that a classification by the Commission, if held up on appeal, or were an appeal filed, as a group living use would permit the peer respite center at 110 Terrace Street. So group homes such as that are permitted outright for five or fewer individuals staying 30 days or more, and as such, would be an outright permitted use within the zone. We do have a number of group living, group homes within the city in which there, you know, comes to mind, Ashland Supportive Housing has homes in which five or fewer residents live and receive care. And those homes are within single-family zones and don't trigger a permit process from the planning side. I will note that they do require building permit modifications to ensure that people that aren't ambulatory can exit a building. And so there's building code requirements for conversion of a single-family home into a group home environment. So the classification as the alternative is a traveler's accommodation would prohibit the proposed use in this zone, directing the applicant to identify an alternative property in a zone within Ashland or elsewhere that allows transient lodging, such as multifamily residential, R2 and R3. Those traveler's accommodations are allowed in those zones through a conditional use permit. It does have a requirement that it be the permanent residence of the business owner. So that, again, is a little bit distinct from the applicant's proposal where the, they are staffed, as opposed to an owner-occupied home. But nonetheless, I think a traveler's accommodation could apply for and receive a conditional use permit in those zones or as a hotel or motel use equivalent in a commercial or employment zone. So in your letter of information, we did receive, as part of the applicant's submittal, a request for seeking reasonable accommodation under the existing zoning laws to ensure equitable housing access for individuals with disabilities. And specifically, the Federal Housing Act prohibits a refusal to make reasonable accommodation in rules, policies, practices, or services when such accommodations may be necessary to afford such person equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling. And so this is covered both in the applicant's materials and in the City Attorney's Office memorandum, which is included in your packet. I will note that it is the city's obligation to balance the federal protections and the local zoning ordinance to ensure compliance without undermining land use policies. In staff's assessment, we conclude that the Fair Housing Act's reasonable accommodation provisions are inapplicable in this case. The prohibition of traveler's accommodations in the RR-0.5 zone does not result in a disparate impact to any protected class under the Fair Housing Act. Rather, the zone maintaining consistency with the intent and purpose of the zoning regulations, the prohibition is equally, is equitably applied across all applicants and properties within the zone. So that's to say that traveler's accommodations are not permitted in the RR-0.5 zone as it's specifically designed to preserve low-density residential use, and the restrictions on transient lodgings are uniformly enforced to support this objective irrespective of the personal characteristics or classifications of the potential users. Consequently, the ordinance does not impose an undue burden or exclusionary impact on any protected group, and the request for reasonable accommodation, again, in staff's assessment, is not warranted under these circumstances. And so the Planning Commission has options in terms of a determination. One, uphold the staff interpretation that is provided in your packet to classify the peer respite center as a traveler's accommodation and determine that that use remains prohibited in the RR-0.5 zone. Or alternatively, approve the applicant's interpretation to classify the peer respite center use as a group living use, or specifically as a residential care home, and permit the use within the RR-0.5 zone with a clear finding of fact of similarity to existing uses. So that's my presentation. But I'm available for any questions, and we're fortunate to have Carmel here. If you had any questions regarding her memorandum.
Do any commissioners have questions at this point? Seeing none, we'll move on to the applicant. My understanding is the applicant's on Zoom? The applicant's not on Zoom? Okay. Welcome, would you introduce yourself? Thank you. You may begin whenever you're ready. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Amy Gunter, Rogue Planning and Development Services. I am here tonight with the son of the property owner, Kent Patton. He'll be speaking on behalf of his mother. The members, other members of the project team are the representatives of the Mountain Beaver House there in the crowd. And this is Jennifer Barger, the client attorney.
My name is Kent Patton. My address is 15735 Southwest 76th Street in Tigard. I also own the property at 9 Hillcrest Street in Ashland. Prior to relocating for work in 2017, Ashland was my permanent home. I'm here tonight to represent my mother, Shirley Patton, who's in the audience, who has owned Mountain Beaver House located at 110 Terrace Street since building the home with my father, Bill Patton, 64 years ago. You may know it. 60 years ago, Dad started climbing the big ponderosa to put Christmas tree lights above the town. It's been there ever since. From the time they built the house, my parents opened their home to the community, including housing a range of students, neighbors, and friends in need of temporary respite. Now that my father's passed away and my mother is relocated, she is committed to making use of the Mountain Beaver House to continue to provide for community members in need. We view this opportunity as building on my parents' lifelong commitment to help those who need a leg up, to stabilize their lives in an unstable world. Mental illness has grown in our community, especially since the pandemic. And we want to use this house to allow people with disability to get the care and the support they need, and to help alleviate pressures on the state's alternatives, alternatives to hospitalization, hotel and motel living, and houselessness. The need is great. We want to add one more tool to the community toolbox, helping our friends and neighbors get the needed care and support. The applicant's attorney, Jennifer Barger, will now present the rest of the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, commissioners. And my name is Jennifer Barger. Are you able to put the slides up?
Yeah, the people in the back have to do it.
Okay. My address is 121 Southwest Morrison Street, Suite 1850, Portland, Oregon 97204. I am the attorney representing Stabin Wagon in its request for a reasonable accommodation and code interpretation to allow 110 Terrace Street to operate as a respite house under the name Mountain Beaver House. Mountain Beaver House peer respite workers have been working steadily this past week assisting people who are fire survivors from the Alameda fires, who now live in Ashland. These survivors are being re-traumatized by the terrible conditions and tragedy occurring in Los Angeles. These people experiencing post-traumatic stress disorder could be finding respite at Beaver Mountain, at Mountain Beaver House with this reasonable accommodation. This is but one example of the many Ashland community members who would benefit from the quiet, secluded calm that is evidenced by Mountain Beaver House's physicality. You can see some of the pictures here. There is ample outdoor contemplative space, privacy, and natural surrounding to help people stabilize their mental state. people stabilize their mental state and to be housed. Mountain Beaver House's grant allows four to six individual Ashland community members to seek peer-to-peer staff support and housing in a respite home. As you just heard, Shirley Patton has graciously made her 1.72-acre property and home at 110 Terrace Street available for this use. But the RR.5 zoning is being interpreted by staff to not expressly allow the use. My client has voluntarily limited the proposed use to only provide respite services to four individuals at a time, and seeks a reasonable accommodation to allow these people experiencing mental illness, a disability, under the Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disability Act, to enjoy the opportunity to live in the RR.5 zone. I want to start out with an overview of what a reasonable accommodation request means and how it differs from a typical land use application. Federal law requires a dialogue between the party seeking the accommodation and the governmental body responsible for considering the request. The city does not have an adopted process for a reasonable accommodation. While existing zoning review processes can be used as a structure for consideration of a reasonable accommodation, the process must still include a dialogue. And that means give and take between the applicant and the city to reach an accommodation that allows for flexibility to enable people with disabilities to enjoy the opportunity to live in neighborhoods with comprehensive plan designations of single-family and RR.5. Staff has not reached out to the applicant to start a dialogue since the application was submitted. This lack of dialogue is already increasing the cost and burden to people with mental illness who need some extra care with respite workers on site to enjoy housing in the RR.5 zone at this location, the Mountain Beaver House. The increased cost and burden is evidenced by the content and effort to prepare and submit the letter I turned in this evening, and to address the tone for the public by the staff report. But the planning commission can remedy this lack of dialogue by meaningfully engaging with the applicant in a conversation about the reasonable accommodation request. To that end, if the applicant's presentation takes longer than the allotted 15 minutes or planning commissioners want to have additional dialogue with the applicant, then these time limits can be adjusted as part of the reasonable accommodation. A reasonable accommodation is a change, exception, or adjustment to a rule, policy, practice, or service that may be necessary for a person with a disability to have an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling. Since rules, policies, practices, and services may have a different effect on people with disabilities than on other people, treating people with disabilities exactly the same as others may deny them an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling. Here, the staff report does not approach applicant's requests with a willingness to engage in conversation, but rather the staff report defaults to proposed solutions which are discriminatory in their effects. Instead of addressing the small scale of applicant's proposed use, the staff report adopts a position of tourist or short-term rental use in order to deny any flexibility as to the application of the Ashland Land Use Ordinance to this applicant who requests a reasonable accommodation. The staff report responds to applicant's reasonable accommodation request by recommending that either peer respite homes are most comparable to travelers accommodations and require applicant to cite its use in another zone where transient lodging is allowed only through a conditional use permit process, or agree with the applicant that peer respite homes are most comparable to group living usages like residential care homes, but then says something like, "The reasonable accommodation requested here can't happen until," or impliedly "can't happen until the code is amended to include peer respite as a permitted use in all residential zones." Neither proposal is consistent with the federal law requiring that the reasonable accommodation request be reviewed by the individual request for the people with disabilities. The staff report's first proposed resolution increases, again, burdens and costs to the applicant and those with disabilities seeking residential use by requiring an uncertain conditional use permit process outside of the RR.5 zone, so completely excluding these mentally ill people from the RR.5 zone. The second proposed resolution improperly implies that a legislative action is required before granting applicant's reasonable accommodation for this request to house four people experiencing mental illness in one existing house on a property that is 1.72 acres in size. Significantly, the staff report's assessment ignores much of the application. State statute through House Bill 2980, adopted in 2021, created respite housing opportunities for just four houses in four geographic locations in Oregon. Only one has been approved in Jackson County. ORS 432751, again, defines peer respite services to mean voluntary, non-clinical, short-term residential peer-supported housing provided in a home-like setting to individuals with mental illness or trauma response symptoms who are experiencing distress, anxiety, or emotional pain. The home-like setting is the key, and Mountain Beaver House provides just that with a four-bedroom house with shared kitchen and common space, just like a shared rental house. The applicant targets people throughout Ashland for respite housing. Significantly, mental illness and trauma cut across socioeconomic lines. The people who seek respite include, but are not limited to, Ashland residents who may be housed but cannot remain in their housing due to mental illness, may be currently houseless but are still residents of Ashland, or may be victims of domestic violence. No person seeking respite will be charged rent for their stay, and that's a key part of this tourist despotition. That staff likens applicant's proposed use to short-term rentals for tourists is unsupported. Staff has no basis for their assumption that the applicant's clients are not part of Ashland's community in need of housing. In contrast to short-term rentals, the people served by Mountain Beaver House intend to treat the house as a home and the place they return to for shelter, which qualifies as a dwelling under the Fair Housing Act. According to the staff's interpretation of the code, the one accommodation needed for Mountain Beaver House is to address the 14-day duration of a mentally ill person's stay as they stabilize their lives and peer staff help link them to services to get the medical care and supportive housing they need to avoid becoming transients, who need to use emergency shelters, hotels and motels, hospitals, or end up houseless. As you will see fully quoted in the letter I submitted tonight, another court, in the case of Step-by-Step Inc. versus City of Augustinburg, has interpreted respite housing the same way as the applicant requests tonight, where respite housing is most similar to a treatment facility rather than a motel or other transient establishment. The applicant asks you to make the same interpretation here and approve a reasonable accommodation to allow respite housing at the Mountain Beaver House as a similar use to group living facilities and residential care homes, which definition includes residential treatment, exactly as the Step-by-Step court ruled. The letters submitted by Disability Rights of Oregon and the Fair Housing Council of Oregon also support this request. Significantly, the staff report claims that the single respite house will fundamentally alter the zoning code because of the short duration of a resident's stay, and we're talking about one home with four people living in it, and that somehow that single fact changes the residential character of the neighborhood. But the staff report only reaches conclusions and has no support for the finding. Further, the staff report does not address any of the facts set forth in the applicant's materials, that the existing house is adequately served by public services, and that the density regulations are met by virtue of using this existing house and voluntarily limiting the use to four people experiencing mental illness. From an intensity of use perspective, residential care homes house five or fewer individuals and would be allowed at 110 Terrace Street. From a land use and housing perspective, the use by individuals who benefit from peer respite are not significantly different from residents of residential care homes. Based on this context, applicant's reasonable accommodation requests and interpretation should be approved. The staff's position also ignores that this property could be developed with an accessory dwelling unit today as of right, or partitioned into at least one other lot that could also be developed with a house and accessory dwelling unit. Either configuration would increase the number of people able to live on the property beyond the four people proposed in this application. More pointedly, the staff report finds comprehensive plan support in the economic development section of the plan, not the more applicable housing element. As fully set forth in my letter, the housing element policies support approval of this reasonable accommodation request. Goal one, Policy 4, specifically directs this commission to comply with federal fair housing law as it applies to protected classes, including people experiencing mental illness. And Goal two, Policy 12, directs the city to cooperate with nonprofit affordable housing providers in locating low-income units, which this proposal includes, as no rent will be charged to residents of the Mountain Beaver House. Under the Fair Housing Act, a practice has a discriminatory effect where it actually or predictably results in a disparate impact on a group of persons, or creates, increases, reinforces, or perpetuates segregated housing patterns because of disability. In drafting the ADA, Congress expressly recognized that persons with disabilities suffer not just intentional discrimination, but the discriminatory effects of overprotective rules and policies and failure to make modifications to existing practices. Let's avoid running afoul of the law and instead accomplish together what the FHA and ADA stand for, and approve the reasonable accommodation request to allow Mountain Beaver House to become a reality. Thank you.
Amy, did you want to say something?
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Can I just, you said that Ashland Code doesn't have a reasonable accommodation section identified in it, correct?
Correct. Commissioner McCrackenjan?
I'm going back to the letter that we had in our packet, page three. The statement that comprehensive plan at Section 5.2.1 recognizes that Ashland has some of the lowest incomes in Jackson County. Can you further define what that means? That it has a low average income, or that it has a high number of people with low income? I find that a surprising statement of fact.
I can look at this and answer you after, when the applicant gets to return to the table. I'm not quite sure what sentence you're referring to, and I'll look at it while the public testimony continues, if that's all right.
Okay. It's on the December 6th letter, page three, under Section A.
All right. And of course, you know, more questions can follow. As I said, this reasonable accommodation request is a dialogue, so appreciate that. Any other questions?
Looks like Russell has a question, and I have one as well.
I think we can turn off the slides, too. That might help see the river.
Russell. Commissioner Phillips?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I just had a quick question about the quantity of people that can be at the respite house. It's my understanding that you can have up to four people that are under care, and then also some employees. Could you speak a little bit more about that, please?
Yes. The grant approved up to six people who could seek respite housing. In terms of trying to be flexible ourselves, since the range of the grant is four to six people, the applicant voluntarily is willing to restrict themselves to serving four people who need respite care. The grant also requires two staff people on-site from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and then one staff person at a minimum all 24 hours. So there is no upper limit in terms of the kind of service that people with mental illness need, but that is the minimum in the grant. So that would be a total of six people on average.
Great. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Parkinson?
Thanks. I'm not sure how to form my question, so I'm going to just step through it by observing that it seems to me that there are two different frameworks that are not intersecting well. So the framework as presented, that interprets and presents the federal guidance regarding reasonable accommodation, that framework makes perfect sense to me, as does the spirit and intent of the request. The other framework, which Brandon articulated, representing land use and that system of rules and construct, also makes perfect sense. And so the challenge that I have is that they don't intersect well. And one of the things that struck me is that by using the land use interpretation, and specifically pegging this more as a temporary accommodation, it seems implicit in that that it would be fee-for-service. And my assumption is that those attending a respite house and benefiting from that service are more guests than those who are analogous to, you know, like a traveler's accommodation. And so what I'm interested in is a pathway that honors the land use construct, but still supports what is a well-spirited initiative. And I'm not sure if this is formed well as a question. I guess the question is, what is that pathway? Because these two frameworks don't intersect well at all.
Right. And I think you can see the struggle that even the applicant has there. I mean, you can read the Disability Rights of Oregon letter, and you can read the applicant's submittal together to say, look, fundamentally, this is not much different from a family. There is nothing that a family living in a single residence couldn't have a guest come for two weeks, back-to-back-to-back throughout the year, and never have a single code enforcement taken against them. And that is what I would like you to take away from this discussion, is that people need a place to land. And it can be in a house, and it can be in a home-like setting, just like the state statute says. And this home-like setting is a house on over an acre of land. It is a secluded area, and it provides that quiet contemplative space. So the idea that, in fact, they do have staff people to help take the next step into permanent housing, more permanent housing, to avoid all the other, you know, things that I saw in the city council's parking lot tonight, of people sleeping in your parking lot and having no place to go. And I'm saying that four people of those who may be experiencing mental illness, or other people in the community experiencing mental illness who need a place to land, should be able to land in your single-family zone, in your RR.5 zone, with a willing property owner who's able to provide this tremendous service to the community.
Commissioner Herron?
Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned that the property owner would like to do this. Is the property owner going to live on site?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McCrackenjan?
So again, I don't doubt the virtue of the ambition. What I don't understand is why this particular property, when there, and was there a search of other properties that might not require the same kind of accommodation?
There is, under your code, the way the staff is interpreting it, there is no RR.5 zone property that would allow this use, and the alternative is to seek a conditional use permit, which puts us right back in a public hearing, in an uncertain world where someone's going to say the character of the neighborhood, and use it as a screen to keep people out of neighborhood, and use it as a screen to keep people out of their neighborhood.
I understand that. I live in an R2 neighborhood, and a care facility moved in two houses away from me. So I've experienced that directly. Ashland is not entirely RR.5. That's my question, really, why this property, and what, and Kerry, if you want to add?
The owner wants it to be there. It's not like they went on a search and looked for a piece of property and found it in that zone. It's a donated ownership, so...
That's my understanding, but I wanted to hear it directly from the team, yeah.
I'm sorry, I just...
No, no, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
Well, there's various ways to put together a possible use, right? And this is the opportunity that the applicant is pursuing right now.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to public testimony. I have Tom Stinson via Zoom. Michael, is Tom Stinson on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Could you speak up a little bit?
Yes, this is Tom Stinson from Disability Rights Oregon. Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to comment here. I listened to the presentation from staff and the presentation from Ms. Bregar, and the applicant. I actually think that, based on what Ms. Bregar said, that this is basically resolved by saying that there's only going to be four residents. This is basically a single-family dwelling. There's fewer than five unrelated people living in a home where they have facilities for eating, sleeping, and otherwise being together. The single-family dwelling requirement and the definition of a family, unlike the definition of group living, does not require that people live there permanently or on a long-term basis. The long-term basis requirement is actually almost exclusively only imposed on homes for people with disabilities. And so I think there's actually a strong argument that the provision for long-term residency is actually facially discriminatory against people with disabilities, because it attaches only to the group living requirement. There's no requirement that single-family dwellings be places of long-term or permanent residence. So the first thing I would submit is, this is no longer an exceptional use, this is just a single-family dwelling, if there's four people living in it. It's now a permitted use. And I've not seen any explanation as to why this, it doesn't qualify as a single-family dwelling. A family can be non-related people living together. It meets, it checks all the boxes, as far as I can tell. So I don't understand, at this point, what the dispute is, as long as the argument is that it will only be used by four people. Nobody's building a gravel pit here. I mean, this is a place where people are going to live, sleep, eat, do all the things that everybody else does inside their houses. This is a residential use. The staff analysis hinges entirely and elevates above every other consideration this question of long-term versus short-term use. And I just find that, even leaving aside the fact that this clearly qualifies as a single-family dwelling, if you don't accept that logic, I really question the staff analysis, which elevates the short-term versus long-term occupancy over every other interest. This is a non-commercial development. It's not for travelers. It's not for business visitors. It's not for people who looked it up on, you know, Kayak or VRBO. It is a regulated home for people with disabilities where they're going to live and reside. The fact that they're doing it for 14 days at a time does not really materially change how this house will be used, or how it will impact the neighborhood. And nobody's really provided a satisfactory explanation for why living in the house for short terms would change things dramatically. I thought it was very interesting to contrast the staff report with the public comments about this actual neighborhood. The staff report in indicating that requiring that people reside for 30 days or more was some essential element of the zoning code, indicated that these RR zones are somehow these cloistered enclaves where nobody could, seeing a strange face would just tear apart the structure of the community. But if you read the public comments, these streets are trafficked every single day. There's people walking up and down. There's dog walkers, there's hikers, there's tourists. There's people walking through this neighborhood all the time. There's strange faces all the time, walking around this neighborhood. So what seems to be implicit in both the staff report and the public comments that were negative, is not that this is some highly private, you know, zone that thrives on having no one nearby. I mean, it fronts onto one of the major tourist attractions for the city of Ashland, Lithia What seemed clear was that these were the wrong people to have in their neighborhood. Basically, the hikers and the dog walkers and the bicyclists and the tourists, those people were all welcome in their neighborhood. But the people who might stay at this particular location, they were not the right kind of people, and they were not welcome in their neighborhood. And that is discrimination, and it was dressed up in, you know, very upper-middle-class language, but that's what it is. This is discrimination. This is a bunch of people who don't want a certain character of people living in their neighborhood, a category of people who are defined by their disability. I will also say...
Mr. Stinson, I neglected to give you a limit, a time limit, and the time limit that I'm going to impose on the rest of the audience is two minutes. So you've clearly exceeded two minutes.
Oh, I understood it was five minutes.
Well, we have a full crowd tonight, and I don't think we're going to get through it unless we limit the time. So I was going to say two minutes to everybody. Could you wrap it up?
Certainly. And I just want to, so I want to reinforce how non-permanent uses are permitted in this area. If I buy a single-family home on April 15th, I'm allowed to move into it and then sell it on May 12th. I didn't violate any laws. I can do that. I can also buy a home and spend the next three years having contractors come in and renovate it, or tear it down and build up a new one, and I'm not even living in it. You know, this, a further use, which lots of people do in these investment properties, is you can buy a home and hold on to it for five years and never reside in it. And then the fourth example I'll give, which I found plenty of examples of around Ashland, is you can serially let your house out for 30-day periods. And so treating 14 days versus 30 days as some magic number, that somehow 30 days is perfectly fine, which, again, I've found people on Airbnb who are renting out their house for 30 days at a time to avoid the local rule. If I have 12 neighbors in the course of a year, I have 12 different neighbors in the course of the year, I don't feel like that's terribly permanent. I don't think that you get major benefits from having next-door neighbors that turn over every 30 days, but that's a totally permitted use in Ashland, under the law.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stinson. Thank you for your comments. We'll move on to Rob Partridge.
Okay, two minutes, please.
Thank you, Chair Werner, and members of the commission. For the record, I'm Rob Partridge. I'm handing you copies, which you received digitally, but I wanted you to be able to see them this evening. This is a petition that put together 54 of the neighbors in our area that signed this petition, supporting the staff report and the report of the city attorney. That is what we put forward. I'd also like to put into the record this evening, I put in the record previously the grant application of the grantee, as well as the agreement that is in your record already, that shows what the intensity of the use is, and why, if you look through it, why it's not compatible with the neighborhood zoning that is in that area. And we think staff did a great job. I'd also like to put in the record, which wasn't in the record previously, a copy of how much money the state has spent on this particular facility, and how much money the lease is on this particular property. This was received from the Oregon Health Authority this morning, that I received, so I would put that into the record. I only have two copies of it here, but I will pass those out, and I'm happy to send that digitally. I'm an attorney. I've been an attorney since 1993. I served previously as the president of Medford City Council, also served as a state legislator. I've watched lots of these kinds of programs and things go through. If the legislature had intended to exempt it and run over local government, they would have done so, and put something in the authorizing statute for these kinds of facilities. They didn't. I think the staff has done an excellent job. You have a letter also from other attorneys. I'm not representing anybody, nor am I representing these 54 people. I live immediately next door and down the hill. I have tried to engage since I found out less than two weeks ago, both the patent trust, as well as Stabin Wagon, with not a lot of, with not a lot of back and forth that I thought. This grant is due to expire June 30th, 2025. OHA has informed me that they have no amendments to the grant information that's in your file. So I think all those things are important for your record, so thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person we have is Sydney Dreyer, potentially?
Thank you, Sydney Dreyer with O'Connor Rest, representing Carolyn and David Allman, 134 Terrace. My office address is 670 G Street, Jacksonville. We've also submitted written testimony in support of staff and city attorneys' interpretation. I want to just comment on some of the testimony. First of all, we disagree that this issue would be covered by the Fair Housing Act. There's a two-part test that's applied in determining whether the Fair Housing Act would apply, and whether this is a dwelling. And one part of the test requires a determination that this is intended for occupants who intend to remain for a significant period of time. Inherently built into this statute is a 14-day cap on how long someone can reside on this property. The second part of the test is whether the occupant views the facility as a place to return to. Well, I think the way these work, an occupant could return to this property for 14 days, but on day 15, just like your Airbnb, the occupant cannot return to this property. This is not similar to a dwelling under the Fair Housing Act. There are a great deal of cases that deal with this. Additionally, when a party requests an accommodation, that does not mean that a local government's hands are bound, and that they must do what someone wants because they've requested a reasonable accommodation. In this instance, the city has a very clear code that distinguishes between transient lodging of 30 days or less, and residential use that is over 30 days. The requested use to have transient lodging in the RR.5 zone does not prohibit disabled individuals from living in this zone. They can live in a single-family home with a friend, family, on their own. They can live in the RR.5 zone in a, in a, I might be using the wrong term right now, sorry, in a residential home, sorry if I'm using the wrong term, and they can live in a nursing home or a residential facility with a conditional use permit. So this contention that if we don't allow this transient use in this zone, we are discriminating against disabilities is not accurate. What is, what this is being restricted upon is the transient nature of the use, not the disabled individuals who might live there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, I now have Ron Rusnak?
I got this down to seven minutes, and now I got to take it down to two.
You can do it, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah. My name is Ron Rusnak. I live at 326 Ridge Road, and I've lived in Ashland 14 years. Separate from my notes, I just wanted to make a comment about what's been said, and that, number one, all the presenters, the owner of the property, her son, and whoever the woman was that was sitting here, they are not residents of Ashland, Oregon. They all live in other places. And the second thing is, is that, and I believe it was you who said that it goes to the neighborhood character. And this neighborhood character, specifically Shirley's house, has been the character there for over 50 years. And as you all know, we all live in Ashland, and we're lucky to live here. And one of the secrets to small communities like this, that everyone wants to live here, is that everyone can't live here. Only a special few people can live here. And you don't need to be special, but once you get here, you, this place, it has a sense of place, and it's that sense of place that makes this community the community. Now, when you have people that are coming and going at two-week intervals, they don't have an opportunity to have that sense of place for any, in any way or shape or form that a long-term resident, or even a short-term resident, has. Which brings me to another question. After two weeks, what happens to these people? Do they, they show them the door, and off they go? I would like to know that. Two weeks is not enough to change a person's life. It might be enough time to get them out of a rough spot, but they then have to leave Shirley's house, and then go off and find somewhere else. And then how long is it that they have to stay away before they might get to stay again? And then lastly, I'm sure that there are people in need that will have children. Maybe they'll have three children. So there's four people. So is that four people the quota for the house, not four people? Or is it, you know, so you, are you excluding mothers or fathers that have children? That would be my only other question there. And I will conclude by thanking the board, the planning commission. I think Ashland is one of the most wonderful places on the planet Earth, and it's because of zoning, and it's because of the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Victor Rico? I have a note here that says he's a Spanish speaker. I don't know what that means.
My name is Alberta Villa. I'm an employee of Stabin Wagon. Is that allowed for me to interpret for him?
Sure.
My name is Victor Rico.
Hi, my name is Victor Rico.
Yo quiero estar a favor de la casa que se abra.
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of having the house to be opened.
Soy una persona que está pasando por una situación emocionalmente, psicológicamente, y estoy siendo afectado.
I am going through, and I have been through, psychological and emotional distress.
Fui a pedir ayuda al hospital y fui trasladado hasta Portland.
I went to the hospital to seek help, and I was transported all the way up to Portland.
Mi problema, yo cuando regresé aquí, yo busqué un refugio, yo busqué ayuda a esta casa.
When I returned, I looked for help, refuge, because I knew of the Mountain Beaver House.
Fui a ver las instalaciones y me parece perfectamente como para personas como yo que estamos pasando por esta situación.
When I went, I went to tour the house, but... When I went, I went to tour the house, but it was... Oh, he's going through some crisis and he went to see the house. And for people who do not speak English. And in this house, the people, the people that are staffed there can give me help in my primary language. I think it's a good option for the people that don't know English. A lot of people like me who don't know English need the help. And when we seek help, we can't because we don't understand. I am in favor of having the Mountain Beaver House open soon so that people like me can receive services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Grove. Hi, thank you. I'm Karen Grove. I live at 131 Terrace Street, catty-cornered from 110 Terrace. And our house kind of sits up a little bit with windows out, so I see what happens on the street all the time. And what I see every day is a lot, a lot, a lot of pedestrians, and those are walkers and runners and bicyclists. And the thing is, people come from all over the city to use that because it's quiet and there's not very much traffic. And, you know, it connects with Lithia Park. It connects with the trails up in the watershed. And the part of the street that 110 Terrace and we are on is gravel and really narrow, and none of Terrace Street has a sidewalk. So everybody is walking and running and bicycling in the street, often with, you know, kids and dogs and older people with walking help. And so, you know, the short-term thing, I mean, it's not a matter of who is there. It's a matter of opening up the whole Pandora's Box of short-term residency, which then I feel opens the door to Airbnbs and all of that, which are currently prohibited. And so I support the planning staff and the city attorney, assistant city attorneys' interpretation that this is short-term residence, similar to traveler accommodations, and should continue to be prohibited in our RR5 zone, which is used by everybody throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Jay Aitch.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Jay Aitch.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Nobody ever gets it right. I also live at 131 Terrace Street. I'd like to, I'm going to change what I was going to say a little bit. I've been writing some notes as this has gone along. And, you know, I think, first of all, everybody in this room, not just the commissioners, but everybody in the audience here will acknowledge that state, local, and especially federal government has utterly failed in addressing homelessness, drug abuse, and mental illness in this country. There's a lack of facilities, there's a lack of budget, and there's a lack of will. That said, we're not going to solve that problem here tonight. Unfortunately, I think that there was an opportunity here for collaboration between the city of Ashland, the residents of Ashland, and the applicant. And that opportunity has been squandered because of the applicant's approach to this, which was to submit an application in mid-December when a lot of people were on vacation. And frankly, I felt we were on vacation. We've had just a couple of days to respond to this. And I think that was a poor move, but I also think having a dialogue outside of the context of an official action would have been really, really helpful. I think there could have been a protective collaboration among all the parties, and unfortunately, that did not happen. The applicant said that, and I quote, "Federal law requires a dialogue." This was in context with accommodations. And that, quote, "City staff has not reached out to the applicant." The applicant seemingly defines dialogue as the city approaching them, where it's the applicant coming to the city with an idea for a project. And again, I think there's an opportunity that was squandered. That said, I did want to address the commissioner that said this is not a fee-for-service issue. I think there is an issue that hasn't been addressed in that the applicant, Stabin Wagon, is being paid by the state and being paid handsomely to provide these services in a residence. And whether, granted, they're a nonprofit, but is a nonprofit operating out of a residence, is that a residential use or not? If they were just providing, say, counseling, drop-in counseling for a day, would that be a permitted use? I don't think so. So I'm not a planner. I'm not a lawyer, thankfully. And so I don't know the answers, but it seems like there's questions, that other questions need to be asked and answered. So I support the city's interpretation. I think the staff and the attorney did these, for me who reads the language in a plain way, it seems like it's the obvious determination. Short-term is short-term. In addition, besides the short-term requirements for travelers accommodations, there is a requirement that they be within 200 feet of a main city street, and also that the owner be present at that residence. And those requirements aren't met either.
Excuse me, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Deb Neiswander?
Hello. My name is Debbie Neiswander. I'm an Ashland resident. And I do peer support and outreach for the homeless. I want to say I really look forward to working with Mountain Beaver House. They are much needed in our community. And not all Ashlanders are living a happy, healthy life. Mental distress is obvious on the streets, but not so much for those that are housed. I have data statistics from the Ashland Police Department Activity Log. And through the month of January through November, in the city of Ashland, we've had 30 suicides or and/or suicide attempts. We've had 18 overdoses, some non-fatal. We've had 30 sudden deaths. Some of them could be natural. The data doesn't go into detail. The fact is, we don't like to talk about these things. But these things exist. And we need to change the dialogue, change the conversation. We need to step forward and give folks the opportunity to seek respite so they can gain what is needed to make changes in their life and to accept who they are and the life that they're living. And there's no monetary gain here. And this is an invaluable service. 14 days can be life-changing. And so I fully support this, and I'm looking forward to working with Mountain Beaver House. It's much needed. We've had, I've had two situations of distress on the streets. Both individuals ended up in jail. There was no room available in the PCU unit. And that happens quite frequently.
Thank you for your comments. Please wrap it up.
Has only done four mental health wards because of no room. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Grace Pettigrove?
Need a second to get my notes out, sorry. Hey, hi, my name is Grace Pettigrove. I live on 223 Maple Street in Ashland. I didn't think it would be that important for me to establish that I am an Ashland resident. I think it's valid for everyone who's here to have a perspective on this issue because it's a really amazing opportunity that we have to have this peer respite in Southern Oregon. And I just wanted to talk about that to begin with, like, what a unique opportunity this is. Right now, I'm a mental health professional, and I, so this is sort of coming from that perspective. But I know, like, in that clinical world, there's a big movement right now to, like, bring more peer services into clinical mental health. People are excited about it. Like, most of our big providers in Southern Oregon have peer services now. But, and the data is really good, that when peers are involved in things, they're better for the people who are using those services. The data is even stronger that having programs that are peer-run, where people are actually empowered within those organizations to run things with the instincts that they have and the experience they have and the knowledge they have, those are, it's just a really good idea. And there's, like, a lot of research that's backing that up. It's very exciting. And there's only, I think, Sam says that there's only 36 peer respites in the entire country. We could have 37 here. That could be something that, like, Ashland could talk about. Like, we could talk about being a place where we really value health and healing and having a unique thing that nobody else has. And this language about two weeks or four weeks seems to be a major thing that's in the way of them actually opening this really special thing. I've had the opportunity to get to know most of the folks who are on the Mountain Beaver staff. And I just, like, they've done an incredible job, like, building an amazing bilingual staff with, like, lots of people with different kinds of experiences. And I was, like, so excited about them being able to open this. And I'm really heartbroken that this could be the stumbling block. I, like, came in here just feeling cheerful about, I'm going to speak a little more, I'm sorry. I was really excited just to say that this is a great opportunity and share that. And I just want to acknowledge, like, that people with lived experience have come here to support this project and are having to listen to people say things like, the thing that makes Ashland special is that not everyone gets to live here. And I just want to acknowledge that that, like, I came here, like, wanting to say positive things, and it's, like, hard for me to hear that about people I care about.
Please wrap up your comments.
Okay, that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Carl Patton? Kent Patton? Kent?
I thought I might need to fill that out, but I'm no longer resident in Ashland. I just want to make a point of clarification, is that our house, we have eight...
If you want to address this, you need to come to the microphone. Yeah, I know. Okay. No, no, please. No, no, not a problem. That wraps up the speaker request forms that I have. Does anybody else, is anybody else interested in speaking to us on the agenda item that's in front of us? And if you are, please come forward, give your name and address. Do they need to fill out a form? And then fill out a form on your way out.
Sure. My name is David Allman. Little hoarse today. Live at 134 Terrace Street. First of all, Jen wore earlier said something about upper-middle class and not wanting this type of influence in our neighborhood. That's not true. We've all worked very, very hard to get where we are today. I want to start with that. I'm a military guy. I came a blue collar. I live in Ashland. I'm happy to be here. So, come on. We're just people living in neighborhoods. My greatest concern is not the members or the people that will be there. My sister was a heroin addict. She died from a heroin overdose. I've lived a life, believe me. I understand what it's all about. My great concern, one of my great concerns is if we change the zoning, if we change the zoning to R2 or R3, it's not just 110, the Patton's home. Doesn't it open up to every other entity that wants to come in? So that neighborhood now all of a sudden will become perhaps a bed and breakfast or another peer respite or something over here. And all of a sudden, those of us who have worked hard to achieve what we've achieved in our neighborhood, who have been there for 30 years, it's no longer our neighborhood. It's no longer our neighborhood. And again, I know my neighbors. I know them well. I know the Pattons. They've sat at my dinner table. They've sat at my dinner table. We are all hard-working individuals that love our neighborhood, that understand that mental health is a tough, tough thing. Again, I've lived it with my sister. I've watched her die. I get it. But the fact of the matter is, is that it's going to change the fabric of our neighborhood by changing the zoning. You change the zoning, everything is going to be reintroduced. We don't know what neighborhood we live in now. We don't know our neighborhood with a new zoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sure. Can you fill out the pink form and give your name and address?
Yes, thank you very much. My name is David Downey Jr. I reside at 199 Terrace Street. It's always been an honor for us to live there. From the moment we bought the house in 2018, my wife and I were first-time home buyers. I'll never forget being able to purchase that house on Terrace and what an honor it was to be up there, and how hard we worked and how hard, how much we sacrificed over the years to put ourselves in that position. In the seven and a half years that we've lived there, we've taught our kids to ride their bikes on that dirt road by where this proposal exists. We've enjoyed thousands, and I'm serious, thousands of walks down that road because we do it so often. I'm concerned about the increase in traffic. I'm concerned about drawing, I'll be frank, people to the neighborhood who would never have visited there. It's a quiet, tucked-away neighborhood. We enjoy our privacy. We enjoy the quality of life and the character of the neighborhood that we have earned. We've worked so hard to earn it. And I too have family. I have friends right now in Boston, where I'm from, that are taking advantage of rehabilitation facilities. So it's not that I'm opposed to that. And I understand that homelessness has been largely ignored by our government. That does not make it the residence of Terrace and Hillcrest and Ridge. That's not our responsibility, okay? There are other places within Ashland that could probably house this facility. They haven't looked into that. The gentleman that spoke earlier, representing his mother, he lives in Tegard. What does he care about what goes on on Terrace Street, okay? The people who are here supporting this agenda have been extremely rude, taking seats from residents when they got up to speak, snapping their fingers, going over there a lot of time, which I've done. their fingers, going over there a lot of time, which I've done. I thank you for your time. All the best. Appreciate you. And again, I side with the city and the residents of the neighborhood.
Thank, thank you very much. Anybody else interested?
We did have a letter submitted from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon that was submitted as public comment, but was submitted electronically, so we don't have copies for you. But I can read it into the record after public.
Okay, thank you. Please, sir, go ahead. Introduce yourself and give your name and address.
James McGinnis. I live at 629 Altamont Street in Ashland. My partner and her mother live just below the Patton property, right, physically adjacent to it. From my understanding, this is a technical hearing. It's about what is going to be supported technically, but I want to know if there's recourse, if it does get approved. I, I really applaud the people that want to find mental health services for people. I have a brother who's paranoid-schizophrenic, and I know what that's like. I've dealt with that in great detail. And I know that there have been problems with, with neighborhoods and people who were housed near him. And I'm not, I'm not judging other people, but my concern is, is there a tech, outside of the technical decision that's made here tonight, if one is, is a recourse through the city council to, to hear about safety concerns? So I just wanted on the record to see if we can get, if this does pass, the ordinance issue, that we have other means to express our concerns about safety. Thank you.
You're welcome. The appeal process is such that if you do not like the decision that we make here tonight, you can appeal it to city council. That would go for anybody who's spoken, anybody who's submitted a written letter, or they're, in other, in other ways participates tonight. Michael Niosmore? Oh, the did, okay. Brandon?
So we received today at 5:30 a letter from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon to the City of Ashland Planning Commission, the subject being refusal of reasonable accommodations related to 110 Terrace Street, Planning Action PAT 1202400255. Dear Commission members, I'm writing as the legal director for the, from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. We are advised of the commission's refusal to allow a reasonable accommodation in its rules, policies, practices, or procedures related to the citing of a rest, group respite home at 110 Terrace Street. The request was made on December 6, 2024, on behalf of the applicant Stabinwagen, whose request for reasonable accommodation was for the city to recognize a respite home as a similar use to group living home, such that its development would be permitted in the RR.5 zone. That includes the subject address. See attachment. The city's planning director and city attorney and attorney advised against granting the reasonable accommodation, citing primarily their assertion that because the maximum time of occupancy in a respite home of 14, is 14 days, it does not fulfill the long-term occupancy characterization of a group living in AMC 18.6.1.0230. The city asserts that since residents only occupy a peer respite home for a maximum of 14 days, that it is more similar to a transient lodging, which is not permitted in the zone. See attachment B and C. On January 13, 2024, Disability Rights Oregon sent a letter to the City Planning Commission to challenge the city's reasoning and to point out the city's basis for denying the Stabinwagen application request was either disingenuous, poorly reasoned, or both. See attachment D. FHCO cannot restate these objections with more accuracy or force that DRO has already provided. We agree with the assertions made by DRO. We adopt and incorporate their objections and reasoning as our own. In addition and furtherance of DRO's objection, FHCO offers the following. The city cannot deny a request for reasonable accommodation by appealing to its rules and policies. Aside from the ethical implications inherent in this land use decision, the most troubling aspect of the city's refusal is a fundamental misunderstanding of disability law and reasonable accommodations. The Fair Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Acts apply to municipal governments making zoning decisions. And it gives some citations of City of Edmonds versus Oxford House, Inc. FHA applied to the municipal government to conclude that zoning laws cannot be used to a discriminatory effect. Under the FHA and the AD-8, it is unlawful discrimination for a state actor to refuse an applicant's request for reasonable accommodation, and that accommodation is necessary for the applicant to have an equal opportunity to use and enjoy the dwelling or equally participate in the benefit from the services programs or activities of a public entity. As a respite house by definition is occupied solely by persons with disabilities, ORS 4302751, it is therefore appropriate that the request be made by or on behalf of the disabled occupants of 110 Terrace Street. The applicant's request for reasonable accommodation was for the city to identify a peer respite home as a similar use to a group living home, since peer respite homes are not explicitly listed as an allowed or disallowed use in RR.5 zones and group living homes are. In addition to making the reasonable accommodation request, the applicant outlined why a peer respite home was substantially similar to a group living home, dispelling any future assertions that granting the reasonable accommodations would present an undue administrative burden or cause any safety concerns to the city. The city responded by asserting that the peer respite home is most similar to transient lodging, which is not allowed in RR.5 housing, and concluded that the peer respite home would not be permitted in the RR.5 zones, effectively denying the reasonable accommodation request. This responsiblies a fundamental misunderstanding by the city and its council as to the nature of the applicant's request. It is not a request for clarification or a more clear definition of classification of a peer respite home. It is a request for a reasonable accommodation in existing rules, policies, and procedures such that the city cannot appeal to its rules and policies and procedures as grounds for denying the reasonable accommodation. Indeed, if the city's existing rules, policies, and procedures permitted the citing of a peer respite home at 110 Terrace Street, the applicant's request would not have been necessary. When a request for reasonable accommodation is made, the recipient has limited grounds upon which they can deny the request. To deny a request for reasonable accommodation, the state actor must show that the request is unreasonable, citing Giebler v. M&amp;B Associates. A request is generally understood to be unreasonable if it presents an undue financial or administrative burden on the city, would require a change in the natures of the city's business, or poses a threat or safety to property. U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and U.S. Department of Justice joint statement of the Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Department of Justice, Reasonable Accommodations, Fair Housing Act, end quote. No serious argument was presented by the city to assert that granting of the applicant's request for reasonable accommodation would be unreasonable. The city relies primarily on the assertion that the short-term residency inherent in the peer respite home make it more substantially similar to transient lodging than a group living home. That analysis is dubious and likely insincere. The city does not consider the stark difference between the transient lodging and respite home, including traffic volume and commercial activity common only to the former. But more importantly, the analysis is unnecessary in determining whether the applicant's request is reasonable. While the applicant is not required to prove to the city that this, at this time, that the request is reasonable, the applicant's December 6 request and DRO's January 13 letter do an excellent job of dispelling any future objections that granting the applicant's request will pose any undue burden or pose any undue risk to safety or property. The city has not responded to the applicant's request for reasonable accommodation, except to use the discretion at their disposal to close doors to disabled members of their community. This unacceptable response warrants revisiting, such that the city must give a legible, legally defensible reason for denying the applicant's request or else grant it. The city is not permitted to hide behind its municipal code or newly adopted interpretations thereof as grounds for discriminating against disabled community members. We wish the Planning Commission and the City Council the best of luck in reaching their decision. Sincerely, Stephen M. Crawford, Legal Director of Fair Housing Council of Oregon.
Thank you for reading that into the record. It's now, so are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Okay, it's now. I think we have one, one public member.
Shirley Patton.
Oh, the applicant, okay. Please, let's have the applicant's rebuttal. You want to, yeah. Well.
So let me just first answer Commissioner McCracken, Jan. Sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. Jan. You had a question about the quote in the applicant's submittal that said, "Further, the comprehensive plan at Section 5.21 recognizes that Ashland has some of the lowest incomes in Jackson County." If you look at the section in the adopted comprehensive plan, the whole section is, is on this theme. So when household income is considered, Ashland is a relatively poor community in Oregon, while the state's main household income in 1988 was $27,053, and Jackson's counties was $25,508. Ashland's was $24,485. Ashland's median household income, $19,687, is in the state's 26th percentile. So I can quote the whole thing later, but, but that's generally what the applicant is relying on, since the code interpretation requires a comparison to the comprehensive plan. Now Shirley wants to say a few words, but right before she does that, I do want to request that since so much additional information came in the record tonight that the applicant hasn't seen, that under ORS 197797 and the city code, that the city allow for a request to apply the 777 rule, but to modify it slightly to allow an eight-day interval for the open record to end on 4:30 on January 22, and another eight days to respond to any new information that was submitted to the record between the hearing and January 22 until 4:30 on January 30, 2025, and then the applicant submit final written argument by 4:30 on February 7, 2025. So with that, we'll let Shirley speak for a moment, and, and I thank you for your time this evening, and happy to answer any questions the commissioners might have based on the testimony you've heard.
My name is Shirley Patton, and I reside at 1075 Amber Glen Parkway in Hillsborough, Oregon. I want to make clear that I regret the distress that the application has caused my former neighbors. I truly believe in the more I learn about Beaver Mountain and their hopes for programming, that neighbors' fears are, are overblown, and the impact on, the impact on their living will be very little, considering the size of the operation. And I, I want to say that after 62 years living in the house there, that even though I live somewhere else, I'm concerned about Ashland. It has been a wonderful place to live and grow and raise children. And I think that the Beaver Mountain Home, House will do us pride, proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the extent of your rebuttal?
That is, we are, we requested the 7, the 888, so.
To keep the record open.
Yeah, as long as the Planning Commission is agreeable to that, we will. We are done for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do the commissioners have any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing, and we've had a request to keep the record open for eight-day periods. Do you concur on the dates?
Yeah, so to reiterate, the record will be open for written material.
Yes.
But no further oral testimony as the public record is closed. And so the written material would be received by any member by January 22, any, any party to the record. Then by January 30, the applicant would have an opportunity to respond to that information. And then the, anybody can respond to the applicant's response.
That's not quite how it works.
Maybe Derek is the planning manager.
If I can get to this computer, I have a chart.
We'll pull up the.
Well, under state law, it's.
That's the chart that he'll be referencing is the state law.
During the second eight days, all parties can respond to the information that came in during the first eight days, and then the applicant has final written argument in the last eight days.
Thank you.
So it'd just be changing these dates slightly by what, one day?
It would be January 22 for the first eight days, January 30 for the second, and then February 7 by my count. So starting the count tomorrow.
Can you get that ready for us on the 11th?
You wouldn't be, you'd get your packet then the Friday before with the applicant's rebuttal.
Okay. I, I think getting it on Friday would be acceptable. Okay. Okay, then, as I said before, the public hearing is closed, and we will keep the record open for the next eight days so that any, any party can submit, anybody who's been a party to the record can submit additional testimony within the next eight days before, on or before January 22. Then for the eight days after that, through January 30, any party can respond to what they've, what new information has come in. And then eight days after that, on February 7, the applicant has to respond for final comments on anything that's come in.
And then just for a point of clarity in terms of the information, so information got posted to the packet, and you shared information today by email, but the information that came in this evening, will you be able to share that tomorrow by email? And then on the 30th, we would be able to get it, you know, kind of? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we are not making any deliberations tonight. Those will continue for us on February 11. February 11 is our next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you all very much. Okay, let's move on to our next item on the agenda, which is. Could we have it quiet? We are still, the meeting is still in progress. This is Planning Action, another Type 2 public hearing. This is a Type 2 public hearing, and a Type 2 public hearing is held before the Planning Commission, with the Planning Commission decision being appealable to City Council. This hearing is on PT-T1-2024-00254. It's a request to remove. It's a request for an amendment to the Oaks of Ashland subdivision approval, which was made under file PA-200127. Excuse me, the meeting is still going on. Could those of you who are not participating in the next section of the meeting please leave? So, this is a hearing on PT-D1-2024-00254, which is a request for an amendment to the Oaks of Ashland subdivision approval, which was made under file number PA-200127 to remove a condition of approval which required that a public pedestrian access easement, or a PPAE, be provided to connect Highway 66 to Sutton Place through the subdivision open space and continuing on between the properties at 554 Sutton Place and 562/570 Sutton Place. The site is the Oaks of Ashland subdivision open space. And the applicant is Vincent Haines, Michael Thornton, and Fred France for the Oaks of Ashland Homeowners Association. The property owners are the Oaks of Ashland subdivision homeowners association for tax lot 1600, Mukesh and Shital Shiran, 554 Sutton Place, tax lot 1500, and Bruce Thielson, Thielson Trust, at 562/570 Sutton Place, tax lot 1800. The comp plan designation is single-family. The zoning is R-1-10. The map is 39-1E-11-DG. Again, tax lots 1500, 1600, and 1800. Before we begin the public hearing, I will ask the commissioners if they have had any ex parte contact or done any site visits. Commissioner Heron?
No ex parte, and I did do a site visit.
Commissioner Kinkaren?
No ex parte, site visit.
Commissioner McCracken, Jan?
No ex parte, no site visit.
Commissioner Parkinson?
No ex parte, no site visit.
Commissioner Phillips?
No ex parte, no site visit.
And I did have an ex parte contact with a former planning commissioner and did do a site visit. I'm not aware of any challenges for bias, prejudgment, or personal interest. I will now open the public hearing. Derek, would you like to make a staff presentation?
Sure. So, as Chair Werner mentioned, this is a request for amendment to the Oaks of Ashland subdivisions' conditions of approval from Planning Action PA-200127. The specific request before you is to amend Condition of Approval 17 that required a public pedestrian access easement to connect Highway 66 to Sutton Place through the subdivision open space. In considering a request to modify, you're looking both at the major modification criteria and specifically at the subdivision criteria as they relate to the specific modification requested. To give you a context of the entire subdivision here, and this is flipped so that north is on the right side. If I can get you a laser pointer here. So, the request before you is, in modifying that condition, to allow them to eliminate this public pedestrian access easement and path through the open space between lots 11 and 12 out to Highway 66 from Sutton Place. That same condition that's under consideration for modification also includes a requirement at the south end of the subdivision for a public pedestrian access here, which is at the top left of the screen, but that's the southeast corner of the subdivision. Again, orienting back north to south, it's this corner open space with the open space coming through the open space here, and it's a non-specified easement, so it covers the entire open space as currently written. And this is an as-built drawing from the Public Works Department when storm drain improvements were made here a few years ago. You can see the route of the path here on screen. Essentially, a gravel path that comes down to some railroad tie steps, and then the gravel path kind of switches back to get a little bit better grade down to Ashland Street. This is the top of the path looking down from Sutton Place, and you see those railroad ties to the gravel path, and then looking down to Ashland Street, Highway 66. And I think the key thing in looking at these photos and at the drawings is to realize that the path here, while it was conditioned in the subdivision approval to be paved and improved to federal accessibility standards to accommodate someone in a wheelchair, the actual slopes are, on average, 25%, and in some places significantly more than 30%, where city standards for a public street or public sidewalks say that we can't install those on property with a grade over 15%. So, the grades here really would not allow the sort of public improvements, if they were being installed by the city, would not allow them to be installed in terms of those federal standards that were hoped to be met. So again, here's the slope looking down to Highway 66 from a slightly different angle. And then from Highway 66 looking back up, you see, again, the slope and the general route of that path. And then this is looking up near the top. To give you an idea of the original discussion at the subdivision level, the applicant had originally come in requesting to install this path in red as an alternative to installing frontage improvements along the highway. At that time, the planning commission ultimately determined they wanted to see the improvements along the highway and suggested that the secondary route here would not be necessary, but it would be a nice addition. However, when the conditions were adopted, that easement through the open space was still required along with the highway improvements. And you can see here sort of how the two routes are generally duplicative and not much is gained by the easement through the open space here. Again, the other issue to be aware of in terms of pedestrian connectivity and easements is that southern easement was intended to connect through to Spring Creek Drive, which involves connecting through... So, this is the Oaks of Ashland, the end of the subdivision, and the Oaks subdivision developer was required to install pedestrian easements and a pathway to the endpoint of the Oaks with the idea that it would connect through the subdivision to the south. And there's a segment of easements through the Greenspring subdivision immediately south that doesn't connect, was never improved. City has previously allowed, planning staff has allowed a fence permit to block off this easement from the Oaks down to Spring Creek Drive until and when that easement to the south is finished. So, really, the pedestrian connectivity has not been fully realized on that southeastment. And on the northeastment in question tonight, I think the slope has largely discouraged its full use. So, with that in mind, planning staff believe, given the grades that would typically preclude public improvements, that those connections haven't been fully realized in over 25 years, and that the sidewalk along Highway 66 was installed and provides really redundant connectivity. Staff believe it's reasonable to approve the request and amend the condition to allow the easement to be removed. And that would be with the condition requiring that the applicant's complete whatever additional public process is necessary to abandon that easement. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioner Kinkaren?
So, if they abandon that easement, will the open space stay in open space? And if it does, who's responsible for it?
The open space would remain in open space, and it would be available for the use of subdivision residents and subject to maintenance by the HOA.
So, they could still go, but if you abandon the pedestrian easement, people can still walk in there, though?
People within the subdivision could still walk in it. It would no longer have the inherent right for public access. And it still accommodates some storm drain improvements.
Well, storm drains now, it looks like it's all underground.
All piped, yeah.
So, those swales that were designed, that were kind of crazy on that slope anyway. That doesn't make sense. I question, it doesn't really, it's not really, it is technically just an open space, then. There's no improvements being required.
Unless you wanted to say that you felt it would be appropriate for them to relandscape.
Well...
And I suspect they would do that anyway, but...
Yeah, I'm just trying to know that if it came through as another subdivision, we would, for them to be able to say that was open space, they would be required to do some improvements. And some, and a pedestrian path qualifies. So, I'm just trying to weigh that, I guess. I don't have any, you know, any further. I just wanted to understand what was going to happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Heron?
If the easement was taken away and the HOA was able to do what they want with it and essentially put a fence around it, it wouldn't be open space for the public. But would we also be taking away any kind of wildlife corridor, any pathway for animals, native animals, to migrate up into the neighborhood there that might be coming from across the street? Because I believe most of those residents are fully fenced, except for that area.
Yeah, and typically with open space, fencing would be limited to a four-foot fencing adjacent to open space, although deer fencing is allowed, unless you were to condition otherwise.
Thank you. Vincent Haines? Please come and address us.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Vincent Haines. I presently serve as the president of the Oaks of Ashland Homeowners Association. I'm here to support our application and on behalf of the two homeowners that are included. It has been a privilege for me and my wife to be homeowners in Ashland, beginning in 2010, and for me to be part of our association board, beginning in 2018. Over the years, I've learned a lot about our subdivision, especially from those who have been here almost from the beginning of the Oaks of Ashland. And for that education, I thank them. When the issue of the possible removal of an easement was brought up, I spoke with several of our members to make sure that our application would be viewed as a reasonable request and that if granted, it would not deprive anyone of the use for which it was created. After being convinced that that was the case, and with two decades of real experience, real-life experience behind us, we decided to proceed with our application. I have read the staff's report and would like to thank them for the work that they have done in preparing a very comprehensive document. The salient points made in our application and the staff report are as follows. One, the primary purpose for the pathway requirement is pedestrian connectivity between the Oaks of Ashland subdivision and our neighboring community. Two, the Oaks of Ashland is now a fully developed subdivision with sidewalks throughout. Three, the pathway has not been utilized by the residents of the Oaks or the neighboring community over the 20-plus years since the Oaks have been developed, whereas the sidewalk along Ashland Street is very well-used. Removal of the easement will provide the HOA and the two affected homeowners the opportunity to improve safety and privacy, while at the same time not creating any inconvenience to our residents or those in our neighboring community. I thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the association and our neighbors and would humbly ask that the commission favorably consider our requests. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Any commissioners have any questions? No, hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting, too.
Sure. It was an education.
I don't have anybody else signed up to speak. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. We're into deliberations. What do you think, folks?
I support the staff's recommendation.
So do I. The inclusion in the first place seems to me to have been somewhat arbitrary and with time, no longer relevant.
Yeah, I don't see a problem. I think that the idea of having a fence along Ashland Street, along that sidewalk, is bothersome to my brain, but, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if there is no connectivity, then I guess there isn't any.
It is pretty steep.
Well, I know. I mean, I remember when that was proposed, and I'm like, you're going to have ponds on that hillside? Nobody's going to go there, and they're not going to be sustainable. So, it's...
Yeah. Okay, then. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to support the staff's recommendation and approve the request.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we support the staff recommendation and approve the request for a major modification to amend Condition 17 to remove the public pedestrian easement requirement through open space number two, but add in the two conditions put forward by staff. Michael, you want to do the roll call?
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Parkinson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kinkaren?
Aye.
Commissioner McCracken, Jen?
Aye.
Commissioner Heron?
Aye.
Chair Werner?
Aye. Okay, therefore, it passes. And thank you very much for your attendance here, and...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Tell Haywood hi.
I will.
Okay, moving on to open discussion. It's 10 after 9. Do people want to go home, or do you want to elect a vice chair? Such a chance. Such a choice.
I say we elect a vice chair.
Okay, let's do it. I understand that Commissioner Kinkaren would volunteer herself to be the chair. Vice chair? Is there, are there... Is, anybody else want to volunteer themselves?
I would make a motion to nominate Commissioner Kinkaren as the vice chair.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of having Commissioner Kinkaren as our vice chair, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Congratulations.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. I'm going on vacation.
Glad I wasn't sharing tonight.
Okay, I think we are done for the evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I was just going to give an opportunity for Carmel to introduce herself.
Sure, absolutely, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I didn't realize how packed it was. I had to, like, find parking kind of far away, but Carmels are on Assistant City Attorney, and just want to introduce myself while we still have the commissioners who are on Zoom. So, thank you, and I will be assisting the city in going forward.
Thank you for your memo. It was very clear and precise, so I appreciate that. And, um... Can I ask the member of the audience a question?
Sure.
Did you get a call from the mayor?
I did.
And did she say she was going to nominate you?
She did.
Okay, so our new commissioner is nominated, and it's John Mayer, who's sitting back there in the back.
Nice to meet you.
And he will be joining us probably for that February 11th meeting. Okay, so let's, all those in favor of adjourning?
Yep.
We already did this, okay.
Aye, argh.
Argh, okay, good night.
Pirates, argh.
Good night, you guys.
Have a great night.